Operations and virtual desk, infrastructure and services. These audit reports are still in progress, of course, has been affected by the current pandemic situation we're in. But we were informed that by the end of this month, or probably early next month, we should get some results and some recommendations that the board can look at. Now, as far as financial assistance is concerned to the libraries, fortunately, $3 million has been added to the library aid, bringing it to a total of $94.5 million. But the public library construction aid, however, remains at $14 million. You may recall that it used to be $34 million, it was cut down by drastic $20 million. So we are down to $14 million for public library construction aid. We hope that the state is going, will review this in the light of the current situation we're in, pandemic, but we don't know, the future will tell. At the same time, we do not know when the first payments will be made to the libraries because of the situation we are in. So we'll wait and see. Now, you all know that because of the pandemic, the libraries and the patrons and everybody else have been really affected in a variety of ways because of the stress and anxiety that this is causing. But it's glad to, I'm glad to note that the WLS has been providing assistance to libraries, which can be extended to the patrons in terms of helping them cope emotionally with some of the problems that they, that are being generated by our current conditions. There is a program which I was interested in, I think is known as the Body Breath, Body Mind Programming, which helps patrons or those who participate in the workshop cope with the, with the problems and the stress that they may be feeling in the current situation. And then some libraries are active in that and providing this kind of assistance. I have to, at this point, pay a special tribute to our library and to our director and to all the staff. You all have been following all this email blasts that the library has been sending out about its activities. It's been very impressive. I think our library and the director have been very creative in providing whatever assistance they can, they can provide to our patrons during this difficult period, and a really great tribute for that. Now, as regards the census 2020, work continues on that. We have been told that the response from the community has been pretty good and is rising, is on the rise. Of course, we cannot rest on our laurels that everything is fine, although the deadline for, for, for this exercise has been extended to, I think it's October 31st. I encourage to continue their work of promoting and educating the public to take the census exercise seriously and to participate in it. I think that's all I have to say at the moment. I wish I could take three or four hours, but I'd spare you that, that's it.
Thank you, and thank you. So we're trying to let Sarah in. Tom, if she, she's...
I just emailed Sarah telling her we were trying to let her in.
So Dan O'Gerry chatted with us back and said she has to accept the invitation.
Should I send that invitation to her like I did Daniel Pone?
Dan, did you, yeah, 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 yeah.
I'll do it.
Okay. So, thank you. Next on the agenda is the president's report. The first thing I want to say is I want to thank our library staff who has just been outstanding. It is a wonderful gift to all of us to be able to talk about all the wonderful work you're doing. We have so many staff members who are making it work in their homes, they're reading books and doing Story Hour on the video. They're just doing a superb job in light of what we're all trying to struggle through. So first and foremost, on behalf of the board, Tom, and everybody who's an attendee on the phone, we want to thank you for just your wonderful work. I can't say it enough. Our kids need the help of just being able to chill out with the library, and so you're making it available. I don't know if everybody on the call knows, but you don't even have to have a real library card at this point. The staff has made it so that if you don't have a library card, library card, you get a temporary one, and then we'll deal with all of, everything in the, kind of in the after, whenever the building opens. So we really tried to make everything available. But we are in this pandemic, and speaking of this pandemic, one of the things we, we have, two things we have to do. One, we're going to do later, and that's we're going to talk about the budget again in light of our concerns, and Chuck is going to lead that conversation. But the other thing we have to do is the school board passed a resolution to change the tax collection for their, their, their tax collection. We are tied to their tax collection, so they passed this resolution and they did it without us, and so now we have to also pass the same resolution. And this is so that tax collection is moved to May 31st. The city actually does the tax collection, and they are not going to do one, well, we have to do it together, and they're not, ours is generally in April, but they're not going to do two separate ones. So we, at this point, are in the position where we also now have to pass a resolution to change the date of tax collection to May 31st so that we are in accordance with what the school district is doing. After we pass this, the school district will actually have to go back and pass their resolution again. So I'm going to read that resolution, but before I do, does everybody understand what I'm saying? Do we have any questions? Y'all are great. So it's a, it's a long resolution, so I'm going to read it and just bear with me, and let's try to get Sarah on the phone. If somebody could try to get Sarah on the phone, if you could text her or email her, let's try to get her on. Is somebody going to do that?
Deidre, I sent her the invitation. I, I sent...
Someone could also call her. Someone could call her and have her on speaker while the meeting is going on. We've jerry-rigged attendees before.
She's not even an attendee, so she's not even coming up in that way. So I'm, I'm going to read the resolution. And Beth, let her know everybody's trying to get in touch with her. So the resolution. Whereas real property tax law 13226-B permits a school district, a school district library, which is wholly or partially contained within a county, which has been included in a federal disaster declaration, may, by resolution in any year during which a flood or other natural disaster occurs in the six months preceding, the due date for school district library taxes provide that every tax in excess of $50 levied by the board pursuant to law may be paid in installment in amounts and dates specified in the resolution. And whereas on March 20th, 2020, the federal government issued a major disaster declaration for the state of New York as a result of COVID-19, and whereas, as a result of the forced shutdown of nonessential businesses, many residents of the city's school district library of the city of New Rochelle have lost their jobs or, are otherwise experiencing significant financial hardship and district library taxes without the payment of interest. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the second installment of the school district library taxes for the 2019, 2020 school year shall be paid by May 31st, 2020. Be it further resolved that the district clerk shall provide a certified copy of this resolution to the collecting officer and be, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Can I get a motion?
It's a mouthful. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? So that motion passes and we therefore will, tax collection will start, will happen in May 31st at a later date. The other impact of COVID-19 are our elections, our library board, library trustee elections have been unfortunately put off. So the, the, I guess, executive order passed by the governor says that you no longer have to get the signatures, the petitions no longer have to get the number of signatures, you have to let the district clerk know that you will be running. We have two empty positions, and so you have to let the clerk know that you will be running, and she'll have some requirements, and the deadline for that is Saturday, the ninth. Is that right? Am I right? I'm right, right?
Wasn't it the 11th?
No, don't, don't mess that up. I don't think it's the 11th.
I thought it was tomorrow, Friday the 8th.
I think it's the 9th.
Okay.
But the resolution, yeah, Tom is going to look at the resolution. I think it's the 9th. But you need to contact, anybody who wants to run needs to contact, and the way the election will happen this year is through mail-in ballots, and so the results will not be known for at least a couple of weeks afterwards. So we just wanted to let people know, if people would like to run for this office, they need to contact the district clerk by a date that Tom is going to tell us.
Is the city mailing out ballots? How are people voting?
The city's mailing out ballots, yes.
But, because someone had asked if the library's going to be on the ballot, so it is then?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, the candidates will be on the ballot, but maybe not the budget, which we'll get to, right?
So we'll get to the budget, but if we are not, if, so we'll get to the budget, but just to kind of foreshadow this, if we do not actually change, if we do not ask for a tax levy, the budget is not on the ballot, right?
An increase in the tax levy.
Yeah, if we're not asking for an increase, as Chuck said, the budget is not on the ballot, but the candidates will be on the ballot. To make sure you're on the ballot, you need to talk to...
Deidre?
Tell me when.
I just found, I found the public announcement. Indeed, it is Saturday at 5:00 PM. Must be in touch with the clerk or the board of education. And there's some criteria to meet, but I don't believe there are any names for a petition as in previous years.
Okay. So, did I answer your question, Beth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that's all I got, and we are going to do the director's report, and then after Tom's report, we're going to do a discussion on the budget.
Okay, thank you, Deidre. And first of all, I want to thank you and the board for putting this together. This, our first Zoom board meeting is not easy, but you're doing fine. And a special thank you to Daniel O'Gerry, who has truly the patience of Job and has worked through everything with, with amazing equilibrium and humor. So thank you, Daniel O'Gerry, for that.
Yes.
And while I'm passing out thank yous, I really think a huge thank you to our staff at New Rochelle Public Library, as I said, I've heard it earlier from Deidre and Francis, but our staff has stepped up in a way that is really wonderful and amazing and impressive. Our full-time staff are working in various capacities, doing different things, stretching, finding a way to continue to serve the public. And it's really shown me that for almost all of us, it's not just a job, it's a real connection to helping our city and its residents find information, find entertainment, diversion, communicate, assistance in regards to all of the resources that are now being brought to bear to our community because of this pandemic and the psychological and economic fallout. It's, it's, it's really amazing, and everyone has stepped up and have stretched themselves and are doing things in a different, in a different way, in a different place, but the results speak for themselves. And I just have a brief written report, and then I just want to talk a little bit about statistics, which we can make available on our website tomorrow. I'm saying I'm happy to report our staff has responded to this emergency in an amazing manner. To a large extent, our full-time employees and a few of our Part 10 people have been busily engaged in providing virtual remote library service to our residents. Our patrons are communicating with us through phone, email, and social media platforms. We answer general and particular questions, assist with issuing new or renewing library cards, as well as resetting phones and providing guidance in relation to our numerous streaming services, online databases, and our rapidly increasing ebook and e-audio book collections. Our Overdrive ebook audio platform, along with FreeDing and other ebook products, are extremely popular with not just the previously cited and extremely active products, but now with our newly added 25 popular magazine title collection. Our streaming services like Hoopla and Canopy have been supplemented by a new service called Acorn TV, which is a BBC-type programming plus international offerings. We have also now provided free access to all our residents to The New York Times just a few weeks ago, and are working to get a great new preschool program called BookFlix through Scholastic available, along with a product called Pangalo, which is a Spanish-language telenovela product for our Spanish speakers. BookFlix and Pangalo have proven to be challenging in terms of technology, and we've been working hard, again, Daniel O'Gerry in particular, taking hats on and off like, just an amazing way. And when I mentioned Daniel, I really want to mention Community Relations, Barbara Davis and Nicolette Fudge, all the staff there have been working extremely hard to produce amazing e-blasts along with our staff. Let's see. I also have to mention our very active Facebook page, publicizing our services, answering questions and making connections. Now we have a growing and separate Spanish Facebook presence providing the same sort of services. Of course, our children's and teen staff are offering great virtual programming, along with our regular contractors providing content. We're working the adult arena too, with our job coach now actively making Zoom appointments to meet with residents needing assistance in the job market. I've talked about our Community Relations team partnering with our staff to issue a series two to three times a week of stellar e-blasts, providing all of the above information and so much more, along with themes to these e-blasts on occasion, cooking, baseball, Star Wars, science fiction, all interesting and of real relevance. And, and these e-blasts oftentimes fall into one of two categories, more generalized and more family-friendly efforts. All of our e-blasts are also devoted to providing sidebar social service information. So I did, that's, that's my report. I do want to talk about just briefly that we, as a department heads, are meeting on a weekly basis, Monday, late morning, and it's been really useful to talk about how we can collaborate and continue to assist the community. We've also been meeting, as Francis mentioned, the WLS Public Library Directors and WLS staff on a series of Thursday mornings, and there is actually quite a lot of anxiety amongst us all on how do we reopen our libraries, make it safe for the public and for the staff. And WLS has been working on a generalized phased-in approach once we reopen, with phase one typically being staff appearing, doors still closed. The next phase would probably include curbside service, which we will do in New Rochelle, delivery service, which we're actively considering doing as well, and maybe some limited building access. And we will build on, on these phases till we reach a point where we're back to where we were. No one knows when that will be, but this plan that WLS is working on will be a guidepost for us, and we've started to work on our own individual plan, which I'm happy to share with the board, once it reaches a more firmer sort of status. So, so to that point, we really have been working hard in the building, on occasion, installing sneeze guards, so in all public service areas, there will be protection for the staff and to the patrons. We're thinking about removing furniture and chairs for the time being, actively reconfiguring staffing areas so social distance occurs, looking at how we can provide services to our public safely. We have, we believe we have supplies, masks now, thanks to the city, we received 100 free cloth masks. We have other masks, we have gloves, we have sanitizer, we have wipes. So our goal is to provide a clean environment when we open, to continue to scrub down areas. We're looking into occupancy rules relative to our public spaces so that we can, can transact business in a safe way, and we're looking at changing the way we do business, not having as many face-to-face meetings, using Zoom, even in the building, using email or texting, that sort of thing. So we're, we're going to be changing the way we do business, but we promise to continue to serve the public. Just our programs, our summer programs in the future, we will probably not have the summers that we've had in the past, which is sad, but we're looking at virtual programs. We certainly will continue to do the summer reading program. We're hoping to possibly collaborate with our colleagues at the school district to do something together. The challenge is to find a way to bring, to relieve the stress of parents who have been helping to educate their children and occupy them, but still keeping appropriate guidelines in terms of social distancing. So it's, it's a real, it's a real juggling act. You know, just in terms of statistics, I think it's worth just talking about. You know, we have Overdrive, which is our principal ebook and e-audio book collection. And in February, we had 2,575 checkouts. In April, for the month of April, we almost doubled it, 4,200 checkouts. For Hoopla, which is a streaming service, we had 449 in February transactions, we doubled it to nearly 960 in, in April. In terms of our efforts to provide library cards to our patrons, whether they live in the city or not, if they're, if they're teachers, educators, since we started our process of providing online library applications, we allowed 244 cards, all but nine of them in English, a near split between adult and juvenile library cards. But the largest group of people applying for cards, interestingly enough, are 17-year-olds, which is really sort of amazing. So our young people are using our library and getting cards, which is exactly the way we wanted it. Our children's programs has real, have really been amazing, and I give our staff credit for doing this on the fly and coming up with very popular programming. We have Poetry with Susan, we have Finger Play of the Day with Bobby Simic, Susan Mackey, Mary Thompson. We have Bilingual Rhyme Time with Maria Hernandez, very popular. We're still doing live music with Sev. So, you know, our programming is, is still on board. Our social media has really gone up tremendously. I have to really provide a shout-out to Nicolette Fudge, who's doing the English, and Maria Hernandez, who stepped into the role of our Spanish Facebook page and has done a great job. For impressions in terms of Twitter, they've, they've increased tremendously from 42 to 1776.
Would you want me to share the statistics, Tom?
What's that?
I can put it on the screen if you want.
Sure, if you want. So we're seeing tremendous number increases in Facebook in regards to post engagements from 507 to 41,118 in terms of found by people on Google, our website, from 69,000 to 140,000. That's February to April. You know, our teen Instagram has increased from virtually no followers to nearly 900 followers.
That's impressive.
You guys see it on the screen?
Yep, there they are. We're doing blogs as well, both Barbara Davis and David, whose last name I just forgot, are doing great blogs about notable New Rochelle residents, maybe legal, music, stuff, Stephen Sonheim, a lot of baseball history. So, you know, across the board, the staff is really stepping up, trying to meet the needs of the community. And we know that it's going to be challenging relative to when we reopen, but we promise to do so. And last but not least, the issue of reopening is, is very much up in the air. We're slated to open after May 15th, but we all believe that it seems very unlikely. At today's director's meeting, county director's meeting, the conversation was, was the thought was maybe early, early June. At 6 o'clock tonight, I was part of a Chamber of Commerce board, a meeting with George Latimer. Francis was there too as well, and from what George said, he, he seems to think it will be during that timeframe. And libraries are now in phase four of the governor's plan, and there's...
Tom, what, what timeframe? What does he think?
He, he thinks at the earliest it will be early June, given the governor's matrix, which calls for all sorts of, you know, really challenging statistical measurements in regards to COVID-19 illness, et cetera. He said Westchester's not quite there, so he's not ready to say it definitively, but he said it to us today at 6 o'clock. He said it to one of our library directors and Montrose at 8 o'clock today. George is just everywhere, like usual. So we think that we'll be closed for a while longer, which is not a bad thing because we want everyone to be safe. So that's it. I'm sorry I took so long, but I just thought it was worth sharing, you know, all that's going on, all that our staff is doing. And I want to thank the board, who has been so supportive of us as we, as we move forward and explored these areas.
Well, thank you, thank you, and welcome, Sarah. I'm glad we figured out how to get you on here. So it says, Thomas, you're under Tom's name, we can call you Tom, but...
He sent me his link, I can't change it.
Sarah, I'm happy to share with you. We know who you are.
Thank you.
So now we get to, the other reason why we're having this meeting is because of the budget, and so I'm going to hand it over to you, Chuck, to talk about kind of where we're at and what we're proposing.
Sure. Thank you, Deidre. And look, the, the discussion we're about to have, the, you're about to give, is very much related to the current situation that we're all faced with. Just to give kind of a brief history of where we are with the, where we were with the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, we had settled upon at the last meeting or two meetings ago, I can't remember, when a budget that would have had a year-over-year increase of 3.67%, and that would have included a couple of additional, the conversion of one position from part-time to full-time, an additional assistant director position, and some other increases to meet, you know, the needs of our, of our patrons. and some other increases to meet, you know, the needs of our, of our patrons as we believe them to, as we believe them to be. You know, as this current situation started to unfold, you know, we, we as a board and Tom, I think, you know, I think Tom initiated this discussion, you know, started to think about, you know, given the situation and the financial burden, which so many of our citizens are faced with, the idea that we needed to reconsider and take, take another look at that, at that budget with an eye towards trying to, you know, minimize any incremental burden on the taxpayers of the city of New Rochelle, while at the same time, obviously continuing to to meet the the needs as best we can of our patrons, who, as we've seen during this trying time, you know, use the library and the associated resources in such a robust manner. So, you know, since, since we began this discussion, the Budget Committee, you know, which is myself, Deidra, Beth, and obviously in close, you know, cooperation with, you know, and and leadership from Tom as the executive director and Gene as the administrative assistant have, have met, and we've come up with a, a budget that keeps the burden to the taxpayer the same as it is now. So we are, we are proposing a budget going forward that is actually flat year over year. So there's, there would be no incremental burden placed upon the taxpayers of the city of New Rochelle. And to achieve that, as I mentioned kind of earlier, we did take out this new assistant director position, which at some point I think we will want to pursue because we think it'll be beneficial to our patrons ultimately, but we think now is not the right time. And also the conversion of a part time, I think, teen library position, and if I got that wrong, Tom, please correct me to from part time to full time, so that, so we'll still have the part time position, but not, it won't become full time. Thank you. And then I think, you know, importantly, and we're deferring the, you know, purchases of new computers that we wanted to replace because they were becoming older and slower, et cetera, you know, but we think we'll be able to get by with that. I think importantly, we were able to maintain the materials, but at the same level where it is today, which we think is really important, I think, as we're seeing at this moment in time, there's just tremendous usage and call for the materials that we have, electronic, you know, especially at this moment in time. But as we, you know, start to ramp operations back up, whether it be curbside pickup or delivery, I'm quite sure we'll see a resounding resurgence in the need for physical materials and the desire for physical material. So we believe we can do this in a way that, you know, still meets the needs of our patrons. It's not ideal, but this is not, this is not a, a time for the ideal. This is a time for getting by with what you need, not what you want or what you would like to have. So, you know, we are proposing a flat budget. What that means in terms of the upcoming election is that the budget actually will not go on the ballot. And I don't know the specifics of New York state law. You know, if people have questions, we can certainly follow up with specifics, but my understanding is, you know, and Tom has followed up with the right experts on this, but according to New York state law, when it's a flat budget, we do not need to put it on the ballot for adoption by the public. So you will see obviously the candidates for library board trustees, but you will not see the budget on the, on the, on the ballot. But so that we think this is the right thing to do in this moment in time. Again, not ideal, but we just, we realize that many of our citizens, you know, are in a, in a challenging place right now. We want to do all that we can to, you know, not make that situation any worse than it is at present. So that's sort of the, where we've arrived at in terms of the proposed revised, you know, 2020, 2021 fiscal year budget. Any questions or comments from the members of the, the board will obviously have the public discussion?
I think it's great. I think it's a really nice gesture to the community. I think it's going to be very much appreciated, especially during, you know, these unprecedented times. So thank you to the Budget Committee and Tom and Gene for coming up with that.
Welcome.
Yeah, I agree. Can you just say what the number, what the budget is this year? The number?
I have it.
I cannot. I do not have it in front of me, but if somebody else can.
I have it here.
Thanks, Tom.
Looking, sorry.
Okay, sprung it on you. I always want to know the numbers.
Five point something.
Yeah.
It is. It's over 5 million. We should.
You, you, do you want me to look for it or you got it, Tom?
I believe it's.
Let me see.
It's 5,830,081 dollars and 28 cents. It's the flat budget.
Yeah. And I agree. I want to echo also what Sarah said.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
It is. Okay.
That number is right, according to what I have as well.
Thank you. I agree with what Sarah said. I think it's, we love our library. We want to keep it going and do what we can and, and make sure that people aren't burdened as a result, especially right now. So thank you.
Okay.
So.
Well, now, do we have to, we have to repass the budget?
I think you have to rescind according to our attorney, right?
Yeah. We have to rescind the budget.
That's right. So can I make them?
Go ahead.
So I'd let, I'd like to make a motion to rescind the budget as previously passed, the budget that had a 3.67% year over year increase. Can I get a second?
A second. I just unmuted you guys.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Paul, hi.
Hi.
Is anybody opposed? Nobody opposed?
I can't. No, no, no. Your opinion doesn't matter, does it?
Your opinion always matters.
It just doesn't count.
It just doesn't count here. And so then we'll, we'll make a second motion to adopt a 2020, sorry, pause, looking down.
2021?
A 2021, 2020 to 2021 budget that is equal to the budget for the prior fiscal year, and I'm just looking for the number, which is 5.8, 5,830,081 dollars and 28 cents. Can I get a?
Second.
Second?
A second. Can you hear me?
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Yes. All in favor? Anybody opposed? No, nobody opposed. The budget passes.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
And that concludes the, the report from the Budget Committee.
Uh, thank you so much. So now we are to public discussion. I mean, before we do that, is there anything else? Any board members take privilege? Is there anything else you want to add before we get to public discussion? Because after that, we're done. Is that a no?
No.
Okay.
No.
So now we're going to go to public discussion. And what we're going to do is we have nine attendees and I'm now going to let them all, I'm going to unmute them and they're going to join our call. And what I would request from the participants is if you could, if you'd like to, if you'd like to say something, what I request is that you raise your hand and then we call on you. We will probably not be very interactive in this. It's usually not interactive, so we are going to let you guys kind of say what you want to say. And we actually had a time limit. I don't remember what, what did we say yesterday? I don't remember.
Was it four minutes?
I would say two minutes.
Two minutes.
Deidra, could I ask? Two minutes. Deidra, could I, Deidra, could I ask that each person who speaks, could they identify themselves and their address or their email address? We usually place that information in our minutes.
Yep. Okay. So I am going to now, we're going to get a whole bunch of people in here. Hold on.
I can see a message from Marjorie.
She would like to speak.
Hold on one sec. I'm just getting all these people in here. Interesting way to do this.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Hi, Marjorie. Good evening.
We can hear you, Marjorie.
I can hear you.
First of all, I have to say.
Marjorie, can you hold on one second? Yes, Dan?
I, you, I think you can mute, you can mute everyone and just leave her unmuted.
I can't. Uh, yeah, I can. Let me unmute all. Is this going to be Marjorie?
But then you can, you can just pick her name and then, and then. And then you go to her name.
Marjorie?
Yeah.
I'm muted. Okay.
Perfect.
Marjorie, you're up.
Okay. So I, I first just want to say a welcome to Cory Galloway. Ms. Oliver and I were not able to be at the last meeting and we just are thrilled that you are on the, on the board and just wanted to say that. And I have to tell, I have to say, listening and listening to all of you, I don't think I've ever been so moved by the commitment. I mean, and I've been very moved by all of you in the past and the staff. To see those statistics, Mr. Giafino, of the amount of people using the library even under these conditions is just remarkable and, and thrilling to see teenagers, you know, engaging in ways that they hadn't before. So I know people are sick of the term silver linings, but I think there may be some silver linings here. I also thoroughly appreciate the sensitivity and the, the, what, how, how you've handled the whole situation with the budget. I just really am supportive of what you're doing and want to thank you for that. And I'm just curious in terms of the election, if Mr. Galloway and Mr. Burke are considering, you know, taking, taking their, what's the word, being candidates for the open positions.
Yes, I'll be running again.
As will I.
Okay, great. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. And, and one last thing is that I know that there's been struggles in the community of, and I don't know what the status is right now, but some of the students do not have, have not had access to the internet. And I'm just wondering if you have any update on that for, you know, for education and also for library services? Do you know if that's been taken care of by the school district?
So Tom, do you want to talk just a little bit about what we're exploring?
Sure. Thank you, Deidra. And yes, Marjorie, the digital divide has been an issue for us as a library, staff and board, and it's really extended far earlier than this COVID-19 situation. We had plans to have a grant, a pilot grant with the foundation for the purchase of Wi-Fi hotspots, which are internet units that could be loaned out to people in the community where up to 15 people could have essentially unlimited access for the period of the loan. Since this began, Deidra and I have had multiple conversations about this problem and have remarked on how more challenging it is now that we have students who have internet access and can receive an education and many students in the community who are without that basic, that basic privilege. And so we have been exploring the possibility of, of purchasing possibly up to 50 Wi-Fi hotspots and circulating them to the young people, their families who do not have internet service. To, to date, actually today, I discovered that we were successful in a $2,000 grant from WLS for this purpose. I believe we are looking into other grant opportunities, including the very generous RXR COVID-19 response. And we may look for other monies too, possibly even our own monies. But we are committed to try, trying to find a way to bridge the digital divide. And Deidra and Dan Bonnet have joined with myself and Daniel O'Gerry to explore this important, this important initiative.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? They're muted. Let me unmute them all. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
They still look muted.
They're not, they're.
Yeah, people look muted.
Raise a hand.
All right, let me unmute. I tried to unmute them all.
Yeah, they have to accept to unmute.
They have to say they want to be unmuted. I unmuted all, so.
They could send a chat response too, right?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll raise a hand. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm waiting. I tried to unmute people. I'm going to give you a minute. Excuse me?
Can you hear me? I'm Dorothy Oliver.
Yes.
Oh, hi, Ms. Oliver.
Hi, Dorothy.
How is everyone?
Hello.
First of all, I'm glad to see Cory is back. And I also would like to commend Diofino, Diofino, about his report. I was very impressed about the teenagers, the 17 year olds that seem to be involved. And I also want to say I have a grandson that's about 37 years and last year, 37 years old. He says, Nana, the, I can go in the library, I can do this, I can get the ebooks. And he was telling me things about the library I didn't know, but he's so excited about, you know, getting reacquainted with the library. And it just felt so good. And I want to thank you guys and your staff for doing what you're doing there.
Thank you. The staff has worked really hard, stretched themselves and imagined what, what people wanted and needed. And thank you.
So I'm going to wait about, about 30 more seconds. If somebody else would like to talk, you can chat, you can show us through a chat. I tried to unmute everybody, but it seems that people don't want to be unmuted. So I don't really have anything else for this meeting. I don't know when we'll be meeting again. Some outstanding topics are, we need a nominating committee for our officers. That's really the only outstanding issue. And of course, also, of course, also, we need, we will find out at some point in June who our new trustees would be. And Daniel's trying to say going once, going twice. So if nobody is going to say anything, I'm about to adjourn the meeting. Okay?
All right.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
A second.
Did you get that, Gene?
Chuck seconds.
Chuck second? Chuck second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I want to thank you guys so much for being such a wonderful board and for making time tonight for this meeting, and I will see you in the future, when I don't know. But I'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Thank you, staff, audience. The greatest gift.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Night.